Zoning Board of Adjustments Special Meeting, Monday, October 29, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on October 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on October 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on October 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata.
Present.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente has been excused. Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Chairman Nansen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Fledge Allegiance?
The Fledge Allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Tropke, you might swear it in the professionals' room.
The record is reflected, Mr. Conlon, Mr. Mallon, Ms. Bean, and Mr. Howard have all been sworn for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Real quick, everybody got a copy of next year's meeting dates? Could y'all please review those? And at our next regular meeting, not a special meeting, we need to go over this. Eileen is running out of dates this year. She's booked, and we need to vote on these meeting dates pretty soon so she can start filling those dates with the applications. Okay? Everybody understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
No correspondence.
Okay. Application before the board, case number BA 1806 L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., use variance, preliminary, and final major site plan. Application, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., as applicant, One Greenway LLC, Two Greenway LLC, as owner, seeking use variance, preliminary, and final major site plan approval to develop property as a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility with improvements consisting of the removal of portion of the existing concrete manufacturing facility, rehabilitating the existing storage building, construction of quality control building, weight station installation of an office trailer near the existing office, the removal and replacement of approximately 13 acres of impervious coverage with landscaping and a total of 250 trees, and the installation of other associated improvements on premises known as Block 177, Lot 6201, formerly Lots 62 and 64, 89 Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard May 7, 2018, when it was carried to June 25, 2018, with no further notice. After some discussion on jurisdiction and the recycling aspect of the application, the board took jurisdiction on June 25, 2018, and then this application was carried to July 9, 2018, with new notice. After some additional testimony on June 9, 2018, this application was carried to August 27, 2018, with no further notice. After the application, put additional testimony on the record, August 27, this application was carried to October 22, 2018, with no further notice. On October 22, 2018, after some testimony, it was carried to October 29, with no further notice. Expiration date, November 30, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, Orozco, and Nansen. Mr. Conlon.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and everyone aboard for coming out tonight for this continuation of our L&amp;L's application. Before I get to my witness, I just wanted to follow up on a request that the board had made. They had asked for a copy of the lease for the property to the north, 69 Yellowbrook Road. I did provide that to the board. I redacted out all personal identification, so the name of the tenant is not part of the public record. The reason I had done this, if you remember, we had had a discussion about my client abandoning the residential use on that property. I had suggested that that happened upon issuance of a CO plus a year so that there was enough time to provide notice to the tenant if, for some reason, the CO fell, didn't line up directly with the ending of that lease.
Jennifer?
Yes?
Do you want to comment on this?
I mean, it's up to you as far as, I'm okay with the stipulation that they will abandon that at some point after the CO, and I understand that there's a timing issue. So, it's up to you as far as how long you want to give them.
Okay.
In terms of after the CO is issued, whether it's to the end of the lease, whenever, you know, I mean, we see that the lease ends end of April, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, you know, depending on whenever that CO is, at the termination of the lease closest to that time, or you want to give them a year, I don't know, it's up to you. I'm okay with the termination of the lease post-CO to address the noise issue. I think that that solves the problem, but it's going to be up to you as far as how long you want to give them.
Okay. Mr. Mallon?
I concur with Jennifer.
Okay. Do you want to address this at this point?
I mean, as I said, I would make the suggestion that it would be a year from the issuance of the CO.
What does your client want?
It's, that's what he wants.
Okay. The board, you want to discuss this as far as the abandon of the residential aspect of that property next door?
I don't have any problems. I'm okay with the year.
Wouldn't it make sense to make it 12 months or the end of the current lease? You wouldn't want to enter into a new...
Correct. We wouldn't be, there would be, they wouldn't be entering into a new lease. I had put out a year timeframe to put a date certain on it, so if it's issued on April 15 of 2019, April 15 of 2020 would be the date that that property would have to be abandoned as a residential.
Okay, yeah. I'm okay with the year.
Okay, okay. Ron, did you get that? The board is okay with that?
I did, and if the board looks favorably on the application, it'll be up to the applicant himself to determine what the proper method is to initiate that.
Okay.
It's not up to the board.
Exactly.
So that if it's landlord-tenant court, whatever pleadings have to be done, but if that's the intent of the board, that's fine. Again, all subject to potential approval, but again, it's the applicant's burden to do that.
Correct.
Move forward with it.
Okay.
Okay. Just another follow-up matter. The board had also requested copies of the maintenance checklists from Aztec. We did provide those to the board, so those are a part of the record. And then tonight, I have with me Mr. Brooke Croissant. He also, he provided a supplemental report. We're going to talk about that shortly, see if the board had any further questions. After Mr. Croissant, we would move on to Mr. Dean. If the board had any questions about his testimony, and then we would move on to our planner, Christine Cuffin. Okay. Good evening, Brooke.
Good evening.
I've reminded you that you are still under oath from your previous testimonies.
Yes.
Okay. The board asked for you to produce a supplemental report to the environmental inventory report, correct?
Yes.
And you, we submitted that to the board?
Yes.
Okay, can you just quickly go through the findings of that report?
Well, I did additional nighttime noise monitoring on two occasions out there last Tuesday and last Friday, and included that in the report with other monitoring that I had previously done, showing the dates, times, duration, location, and came to the conclusion that it's because of the traffic out there and the trucks out there that it is noisy, and that the monitoring that I did that ranged from before 6 o'clock in the morning till after 10 o'clock at night indicated that the, that there were, that the average noise out there was 9 to 15 dBA above the nighttime limit of 50 dBA, which is just indicative of the fact that the traffic noise out there predominates.
Okay.
Now, this is existing noise, correct?
This is existing noise. There were no L&amp;L trucks that were observed or monitored during the times that I was taking my measurements.
Okay, not even during the AM?
No, they, I, my monitoring that I did last week was before 7 o'clock in the morning, before they started operations.
Okay.
That monitoring was on the roadway or on the property?
It was on the residential L&amp;L property. I did monitoring at the residential L&amp;L property and also did monitoring at the intersection of Cranberry and Yellowbrook Roads.
And part of your report, you actually, you starred, you included the map that included where you took your measurements.
That's correct.
Okay.
And you also confirmed that the noise, the daytime noise levels from L&amp;L's property are within the standards?
Yes.
Okay. And you also confirmed that the nighttime noise levels from L&amp;L are within the 50 dBA standards?
The projected, we're talking about.
Yes, correct.
Yes, yes, I did. I did some revised calculations there based upon taking out the recycling facility.
Okay.
And so I presented new tables.
And they were below the standard?
Yes.
This is daytime, correct? Daytime, correct?
Daytime at all receptors and nighttime at the Cranberry Road receptors. Obviously, at nighttime, they are above the 50 dBA standard at the L&amp;L homes, and we previously addressed how that's going to be handled.
I have no further questions.
Ms. Bean?
I just have some questions about these tables in your report. So, for example, Table 3, when you talked about projected noise levels at 71 Yellowbrook Road, it says plant nighttime L-max at 50. And then in that column, you have 73, 75, 84, 77, 75. But yet, you say that they're compliant with the noise levels. I don't understand the table at all.
Okay, that first column of the 73 and 75 at nighttime is measured at the source, and there's a footnote there indicating that those are, the truck idling and the truck driving on-site are values, are L-max values at the distance of 25 feet.
25 feet from what?
From the source.
Okay.
So I was 25 feet from the truck when I measured those levels, and then calculating them to the, to the house, to the closest house, I got a value of 60 decibels based upon the distance.
So that's not compliant?
Correct. And I said it's, these are the Yellowbrook Road homes that are not compliant at night, and that's why we are going to be abandoning them as a residential use.
What's the address of that house?
The, there are two houses there, and I believe they are 69 and 71.
So, you control both or one?
Both.
So my understanding is one.
The property has two houses on it. There's only one tenant presently.
Isn't there an apartment behind the house? That's what you're talking about?
Right, there's two structures that can be, someone can live in. There's one, one has a tenant in it and one does not.
So, this, I don't understand the purpose of this table. So, if you're not planning on using that northerly driveway for this use, and you're only going to use the driveway that's south on Yellowbrook, where exactly was the source when you measured it, exactly?
The source for the trucks, that was on the L&amp;L property where I was, we set up some cones so that the trucks could drive by, and that I was 25 feet away and measured them.
Okay, but you're not telling me where on the property, which is what I asked. Where on the property?
Interior, on some asphalt to the south, to the, between Yellowbrook Road and the large building on-site.
Was that closest to the house?
No, no, this was not monitoring at a house.
No, no. Where the truck was, was it closest to the house? In the parking lot there? Close to the house?
No, it was not close to the house.
Okay.
It was close to the building.
Okay.
Is it 150 feet away from the building?
The...
This would have been very helpful had you provided a map showing us exactly...
There is a map, there is a map that's attached that shows where the monitoring occurred.
No. No.
Okay.
The map is, the monitoring is not even on your property. The map that you provided us, there's no monitoring on your property.
Yeah, it doesn't show it.
The stars are off.
Mr. Croissant, how far away from the property line approximately were you when you took the readings that you put together for Table 3 and Table 4? Approximately, how far from the property line were you?
So 200 feet away, you're still not in compliance with the noise at night?
I think...
And you're saying using that other roadway is going to solve this problem?
No, no. Let me back up a second. Let's go back, that Tables, Tables 1 and 2 are monitoring data, and they were conducted at four different sites, and there is a map that shows those four different locations. Tables 3, 4, 5, and 6 are projections based upon using information about the given source and plotting it on a map, and then calculating what the value is at the houses in question. So, for example, the daytime values for the plant, that was values that I count, that 84, I calculated based upon information that was given to me from Aztec. There were some 30-some sources, so I mathematically added them together and calculated them and summed them to get to 84. The value for the loader is a, you know, is an industry standard. The value of trucks idling and trucks traveling at 5 to 6 miles an hour are not available in the literature, and so I took measurements with L&amp;L trucks at a defined location so that I had a comparable value that I could then input into my calculations.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to... No, I was going to say, and those two properties to the north of this property are going to be abandoned as residential uses.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Gazirowski?
I just, I want to object to reliance by this witness upon information given to him by Aztec. We don't have that before us, we don't know what equipment...
With all due respect, she was here for two meetings and went over the equipment and the specs and everything about it, so I'm not sure why he wouldn't be able to rely upon that to do his analysis. She was here for two whole meetings, going through extensive testimony plus cross-examination.
She didn't testify with regard to noise.
I think she did.
She did.
She did.
In fact, I think she testified...
Look, I know how these things work. All of this equipment...
In fact, she testified that she often goes to sites and talks on her cellphone or next to the equipment while it's running.
Right.
Yeah, they should have a manufacturer standard that's, that's produced.
I'm not aware of any of that information being placed before the board, and he says he's relying upon what she told him.
Right. Do you have any of that information?
Not on my possession at this time. It's back at the office.
Would you mind providing that, please?
Sure, I can. I mean, just as, as a comparison, let's say there were HVAC rooftop equipment on top of the building. I would take a spec from the manufacturer of that particular piece of rooftop equipment as my starting point for the noise calculation. I wouldn't expect to have testimony from that person present.
I understand, that's why I'm asking you, please provide the information given to you.
Happy to supply it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get that on the record.
Okay.
Okay, Jennifer, do you have any further with this?
No, you know, because basically, the testimony that's been provided is that this receptor that's creating the concern with compliance is going to be abandoned within whatever year of the CO or whatever you ultimately decide, and that it appears, based on this new information, that the next closest sensitive receptor would be on Cranberry Road, and that they would be compliant with the nighttime decibel level as well as the daytime decibel level. I don't have any further concerns.
Well, I don't think it'd be in compliance with the nighttime. I think he testified that in both locations, it was over...
It showed, no, that's only at the, at the property line for Yellowbrook Road, which is the house that's being abandoned.
Okay.
At the Cranberry Road, which is Tables 5 and 6, it shows the nighttime projected decibels are below 50 at night. Am I not reading that correctly?
You are.
You are correct.
So therefore, the next closest sensitive receptor would be those homes on Cranberry Road, and based upon the information provided in the report, it appears that they will be below 50 at night and below 65 during the day. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are.
So it was just the house that was immediately adjacent, or the two units that are immediately adjacent, which the applicant has testified that will be abandoned and become offices, Mike, correct? Or something?
That is, that is the ultimate plan, yes.
Something other than residential?
Something other than residential. They will be abandoned as residential.
And then, once that residential use goes away, then that requirement is no longer applicable, so therefore, they would be compliant with the noise ordinance.
Okay.
Based upon the information that I've seen from them.
Okay, any questions from the board? Mr. Armata, any questions?
Yeah, when that equipment is operating...
Use the mic.
Yeah, I got it right here. When the equipment is operating, let's assume at 84, how does that project, and you can calculate that out, I assume, out to where the closest house is? Forget about the two houses in question that are owned by the client. How about to the closest house? If I'm operating that thing, and I got trucks going in and under the hoppers, and the noise level's 84 at that location, how does that project out to the houses, to those folks out there?
So, there's a table here. So, it's 900 feet to the houses on Cranberry Road, so that 84 drops down to 59 decibels within that 900 feet.
Okay, assuming that there is no sound barrier or anything, that's as straight as the crow flies, so to speak.
That's correct. That's not assuming, that's not taking any benefit at all to the berm or trees or anything. That's just based upon attenuation due to distance.
Okay, and what is that number again?
59.
That's daytime, no.
Right, that's...
That's the worst case.
Yes, that's operating, when it operates and it's manufacturing asphalt.
With everything going on.
So that's why at night, as presently configured, they can't operate the plant at night because it would exceed 50, but during the day, it's well below 65.
But we could assume a truck could be driving at whatever a diesel truck noise level is pulling into the place near that equipment.
Yes.
And that would be lower, probably around 75 or whatever.
Right, and when you're adding noise levels together, when there's a 10-decibel difference between the two, the quieter one does not contribute at all. So, with a 9-decibel difference between the truck and the plant, you would only get a few tenths of an increase due to the truck being there at the same time as the plant operating.
Okay, fine, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
That 900 feet, is that from the entrance of the property?
Or is that from the...
That's from the plant.
From the plant. So now, during the course of the day, when you have, I don't know, this is just a guess because it's an operation question, you have 10, 15 trucks pulling in, lining up to get their asphalt. I know some are going to be parking into the parking spaces, but I'm sure there's going to be an overlapping that some of them are going to be by the roadway. What will the decibels be there towards the houses on Cranberry?
Well, we have a starting decibel of 75 with respect to the truck, so that they will much more rapidly attenuate below the 65. And it's, you know, perhaps you can speak further with Lance about it, but it's my understanding that he's not expecting 15 trucks on-site at any one point in time. And if there would be that many, they would be with engines off.
Yeah, but that would be them coming on to the property. They wouldn't shut their engines off as soon as they enter the roadway, throw off the roadway.
No, they would shut it off when they, when they park.
When they park, but I'm talking about the ones that are backed up to the roadway that have still, still part of the process. How many, I know it's in operation, you don't, you can't answer that question, but you understand what I mean? Is that you have 15 trucks, they're in the part of processing, so they're all, their engines are all still running because they're coming up the driveway. So there are some that's going to be overlapping, maybe even onto the roadway, which doesn't matter into the calculation. doesn't matter into the calculation, but they would be on the edge of the roadway, that's what I was wondering.
Well, I don't think that the, the plans are that there's gonna be any trucks ever backed up onto the roadway, that the site is plenty large to accommodate, uh, queuing of trucks.
Okay. I think the other thing is state law says that you can't idle a diesel truck longer than three minutes, so...
Yeah, I had a quick question, too. Um, when you take these readings, does wind speed or direction have any effect on the sound?
Uh, you have to do monitoring when it's less than twelve miles per hour, which it was in every case that I was out there, because there is a wind screen on the microphone so that wind blowing across the microphone doesn't directly affect the readings. There certainly could be times when you have a ten mile an hour wind in the fall and you have rustling of leaves that the meter picks up, uh, and that would be so noted, but at the times that I was out there, the winds were calm and there was no influence from the wind.
Okay, well, what is the situation when you have a twenty-five mile an hour, you know, a windy night, and that wind is blowing from the site towards Cranberry? Would that increase the noise level?
No, for what's considered short distances, like less than a thousand feet, meteorological conditions don't really affect, uh, one way or the other and are never part of those calculations. If you were concerned about something very loud and you were looking at a, a half mile or a mile away, obviously then meteorology plays a factor in it as far as whether there's an inversion or clouds or wind direction, et cetera, but for distances of less than a thousand feet, meteorology is never considered, uh, either in the monitoring or the modeling.
Any other questions? Professionals?
Thank you very much.
I have a few questions.
I, are we gonna, is this cross or...
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay.
I misspoke, I misspoke.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My next witness is Gary Dean.
Good evening, Mr. Dean, I'll remind you that you are under oath.
Good evening. Yes, I understand.
Okay. Um, and just, just to, I guess for housekeeping, the, the board had asked for us to provide some, uh, concept sketches, which we have, to, uh, supplement the, or support the, the testimony that was already provided by Mr. Dean. Those were provided and reviewed by the board's professionals.
Correct.
Um, and I brought Mr. Dean back to, uh, basically, there was a, a report he wanted to talk about that we weren't able to get our hands on at the last meeting, um, and also to supplement any testimony he provided and answer, answer any further questions that the board may have of him.
Okay. Yeah, it was Adelphia Road.
Correct. I think it was the chairman, you, you had asked, um, about whether we had evaluated the need for off-track improvements or a traffic signal in particular at Adelphia Road, also known as County Route 524. We had studied that as part of the county application to the Solid Waste Advisory Board, and we found that a traffic signal was not going to be needed at that location, it was based upon peak hour traffic counts and then midday counts that we had done, identical to the scope of analysis done at Route 33. It included additional traffic from the Elon mixed-use development, and it included the future projection of traffic associated with the L and L application. And from that, we had concluded, I don't recall whether the county ever formally reviewed that information, but we had concluded that a signal wasn't required, but more important to that, we also evaluated the peak hour traffic conditions at the intersection, and we made reference to the Elon report, or we reviewed the Elon traffic report, uh, in that that site was much closer to Adelphia Road. And in reviewing that traffic study, again, including the traffic from the subject application, we concluded that there would continue to be favorable levels of service C or better during both peak hours. So it wasn't indicative, uh, of needing improvement, but it was studied and, and obviously we found no, um, no significant impact at that location.
What were the levels there? Do you, do you recall?
Uh, they were B, B as in boy, and C.
B and C?
Correct.
When was the C? Morning or afternoon?
Afternoon.
And was that generally because of car traffic or truck traffic?
Uh, car traffic. As to the, the sketches, um, toward the conclusion of my testimony last week, I was drawing a comparison of the projec- projected traffic from L and L with the volume and character of traffic that we might expect if the property were developed in accordance with your SED zoning. And I cited, I believe, three specific examples that are expressly permitted in the zone, and given the size of the property, thank you for doing that. You see on the, on the screen is the first of three such concepts. And although I made, I'll say, a back-of-the-envelope sketch to the zoning ordinance at the suggestion of your professionals, I refined those estimates with a, a very, I'll say, crude and approximate sketch, but it took into consideration the required parking, the size of the building that could be fit, and the impervious coverage, as well as respecting the front and side buffers, as well as the environmental constraints which are located to the very far left of the exhibit you have before you in sort of the triangular point, if you will. And so in reviewing all of the applicable bulk standards, if you will, in the zone, I just came up with three rough concepts that featured, as you'll see on the screen, a building, in this case would be a three-story, five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-square-foot office building with, and candidly, I overparked it in that I was simply drawing on the plan, and I reached a point where I looked like I had enough, and it worked out to be, I think it's twenty-six-hundred parking spaces, but only nineteen-hundred are required. And one of the things I did not do in these sketches is that your ordinance requires, if I'm not mistaken, a landscaping island for every ten parking spaces, so, again, quick math, if I remove ten percent of the twenty-six-hundred-and-eighty-two parking spaces, I'd still have twenty-four-hundred, twenty-three-hundred, well in excess of what your ordinance requires, and, and clearly it all fits on the site. And this was an important exercise, only because associated with each of these concept sketches are certain traffic activity, and if an office building were developed on this site, as is envisioned in the zone, of the size depicted on the sketch, applying the same traffic engineering standards, um, that all traffic engineers do using data published by the ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineers, that office building you see on, we'll say, Concept Sketch One would generate approximately fifty-seven-hundred vehicle movements per day. It would generate five-hundred-and-seventy-five in the morning peak hour and approximately six-hundred-and-fifty in the evening peak hour. But an office use doesn't generate very much truck activity, perhaps a handful, you know, six to ten trucks a day between UPS and office supplies, that sort of thing. If we could go to the next sketch, that is a manufacturing use, and this site obviously has a history of manufacturing operations, albeit not necessarily in a building of the size that is depicted, um, but you will see from this example, it's roughly, well, it is, exactly half a million square feet, five-hundred-thousand, but manufacturing requires less parking than does an office building, but requires loading bays. And going through, again, the same parameters in your bulk zone standards, this particular layout would have a sixty percent impervious coverage, where seventy is allowed, and I believe the site today is, is at eighty or slightly in excess. A manufacturing use, if developed on the site, would generate much less traffic than an office building, but still roughly seventeen-hundred trips or traffic movements per day, with three-hundred-and-twenty-five, give or take, in each peak hour. However, would generate substantially more overall truck activity at about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred trucks per day. And I'm, and I'm devising these numbers or making these projections just based on data and studies of other manufacturing sites where someone has calculated the various truck characteristics. The last sketch is a warehouse, distribution or fulfillment center, as is permitted in the zone. That size building can be bigger because it requires the least amount of parking. It does require the same number of loading bays with, um, I think, twenty-two are required for the size building, which is, uh, six-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifteen square feet. We showed fifty-eight loading bays, again, just because they fit on the property along the, what would be the northerly side of the building, but it only requires a hundred-and-twenty-four parking spaces. And this, given it's the biggest building, has the least amount of impervious coverage with only fifty-seven-point-four percent, and again, generally falls within the same developed envelope as exists on the site today. And this type of facility, depending on the type of warehouse, could generate anywhere from a thousand to thirteen-hundred-and-fifty total traffic movements per day, uh, with roughly a hundred in each peak hour, and somewhere between two-hundred-and-twenty-five to four-hundred truck movements per day. Now, I know it's a lot of numbers. I contrast all of this to the projections that we've contained in our report for L and L. And we are projecting for L and L, using, again, just peak hours, twenty-four trips in the morning, twenty-six trips at night. That is orders of magnitude less than the traffic that this zone, I will say, envisions from a permitted use.
What is your peak hours, again?
The, the exact time?
Yep.
They, they're somewhere between, and I'll give you the exact number, seven-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning and five to six at night. And adding up the total daily traffic, again, just from the bituminous, it would be roughly a hundred-and-fifty total trips per day, which, again, is well below, it's a tenth, ninety percent less than your other permitted uses, substantially less than office. And I think the last question, Mr. Chairman, that you had asked is, have we looked at other asphalt manufacturing facilities? And as part of this engagement, we actually counted this Devola facility just south of the subject property on Yellowbrook Road, uh, just south of Cranberry Road. And same peak hour numbers, we found that that facility generated eighteen, eighteen total trips in the morning peak hour and five at night. So our projections in this study are higher than we've seen from a neighboring site, a little bit higher, but I would say within the spectrum of three-hundred peak hour trips and thousands of daily trips, we are definitely in line with what we've seen from that facility, which was counted last October. So we have, I think, a fairly comparable data source in, in terms of not only to how this particular application contrasts with your zone plan in a favorable manner, but also how it compares to another neighboring site that I would submit is similar in operation and, and scope.
But that neighboring site, was it in operation at that time?
Yes, oh, yes.
They, they were full-blown operation?
I don't know what full-blown means, they were in operation, and so we, we counted them as of October of seventeen, I believe it was.
Were they running at night? At that time?
Uh, we, we didn't count at night, we only looked at daytime.
Okay.
I, I believe they were not, and the only reason I say that is that their truck activity, there was one truck between four-forty-five and six o'clock at night, so I'll let you draw your own conclusion, we ceased our counts at six, there was so little activity.
Okay. So you, you really don't know if they were really in full operation then?
No, no, I don't. And I guess in summary, I, I, I hope we've, now with our sketches, and, and again, I, I know I bristled at the suggestion, and I apologize for that, but the design effort to go through and review these sketches, I, I think, revealed a little higher building yield than I was estimating at the last hearing, um, but I think it demonstrates the point that the subject application generates significantly less traffic than we would otherwise expect with permitted uses in the zone, and in terms of that balancing test that, that you need to do in terms of benefits and detriments, from a traffic engineer's perspective, I think an opportunity, um, with a land development application that keeps traffic on the very low end of the spectrum, I think has certain benefits in terms of minimizing its impact on the road system. Um, and I'd have to estimate that the operation by L and L is at least comparable, i- if not less, than what previously occurred on this site with another manufacturing operation. So with that, I don't, I don't believe I have anything else to...
Jennifer.
...offer.
The only other question I have, I, I don't really have any objection to the testimony with respect to the sketches, but I do have a question for some testimony that you gave last time about the amount of traffic that L and L is gonna lead into the intersection. And I think that we talked about it, Charlie, you were there with me when we met earlier this week, um, I would like to know the percentage of the traffic on the Yellowbrook Road approach to the intersection, as opposed to the overall intersection, like you said, is point-zero-five percent of the overall.
Correct.
But I would venture to guess that the lion's share of the cars are on thirty-three, not on Yellowbrook Road, so I would like to know how much of the traffic on Yellowbrook Road is coming from L and L.
I can certainly calculate that, I'm sorry I didn't anticipate it, and I should have. It will differ depending on the peak hour, but if I look at, and I'm sorry to exist in a world of numbers, but if I look at, um, our figure, let's see, figures nine and ten...
On what?
On, I'm sorry, good point, from our traffic impact assessment updated April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. What, what I need to do on these figures, and you'll note that I included traffic from the recycling facility, uh, the paving operations that, that are already occurring on the site by virtue of the planning board approval, and just the bituminous concrete, what, what I need to do is extract the bituminous concrete numbers and add those into Yellowbrook, but I will certainly do that if, if, I, I don't want to waste your time now, but I, I can do it while I'm here and, and answer the question later this evening if that's appropriate, or, or just furnish your professionals with calculations, whichever you prefer.
No, I mean, I think it's something that the board should be aware of, because, you know, I don't think that there's anyone in this room that would be of the opinion that a light is not needed at the intersection of Yellowbrook and Thirty-three today, it's dangerous. Um, and I understand that overall in the intersection, it's a very small percentage, but when ninety-nine-point-nine percent of the traffic is the through traffic on Thirty-three, it's important for us to understand what, how much of the traffic entering the intersection is from this versus existing. I think that's important for the board to know.
Yes.
Um, I think it's important because at some point, I would venture to guess that the township is gonna look towards the DOT to put a light there, and how to assess what the impact is gonna be is important as well, and, and so that's something that I think the board should be aware of. I think, Mr. Chair, you also were interested in the percentage of the traffic at the intersection of Five Twenty-Four, correct?
Correct.
That you were interested in as well, so while you're calculating out the thirty-three percentage, I think the chair would like the Five Twenty-Four. So while you're calculating out the 33 percentage, I think the chair would like the 524 percentage as well.
Yes.
But as far as the concepts go, I take no exception to what was being put forward, and I don't disagree with what you can provide.
Mr. Mallon.
We had the same, we looked at it. I wanted to see where his contention was. I wasn't at the meeting that they had, but one thing I do know, and maybe it might be important for Mr. Dean to represent what DOT uses as a criteria to place a light there. They have their own criteria different than we have. And, I mean, the only one I know of is, we need two volunteers to give up their life, unfortunately, and then DOT will look very hard at it. But that's the only time I've ever seen DOT actually run quickly. Other than that, they have a process, and if you know, Mr. Dean, maybe you know better what that process is and what can be used?
I do to both, and I've calculated, looking at the traffic on Yellowbrook, as far as the contribution by L&L, it would be 10% in the morning peak hour and 7% in the evening peak hour. As to the standards that DOT uses, the document that was submitted to this board as part of the application, and I'm referring to the Traffic Signal Warrant Analysis for Route 33 and Yellowbrook Road, it was done in accordance with what is known as the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's a very fancy way of saying, it is a book published by the Federal Highway Administration that all state agencies use, as do local jurisdictions and county jurisdictions, to ensure consistency with the placement of signs, end stripes, and traffic signals so that motorists experience a consistent, we'll say, information presentation wherever they are in the United States. Among those standards are the requirements for the installation of a traffic signal. Those same standards are used by NJDOT. They would typically be used by municipal engineers or county engineers, and that the analysis that we prepared at the request of, at the time, the township's reviewing consultant, which was the same as the county solid waste advisory committee was using, followed all those practices. And so literally, the document that our office prepared could be submitted tomorrow to NJDOT with the request from the municipality for a traffic signal. And we, I'll say, prepared it with that expectation that that could be effectuated as soon as possible. I think that answers both, I hope.
What are some of the criteria? What I'm saying is, obviously, if a traffic light's put there, it obviously will convenient, be convenience for the Yellowbrook Road users, but now you're going to look at the Route 33 users that now have to stop.
Correct.
And so what analysis, that's what I'm saying, you say you use criteria. What are some of the items that they look at?
Fair question. Appendage to that document are all of the warrants, the information that any agency, but we'll say DOT, would use. For example, and I think the board may recall, my testimony was, most of the times, most of the time, there needs to be sufficient sustained traffic for eight hours to justify a signal. And the reason is, we've all driven through bad intersections where for one hour a day or two hour a day, we could all say, that intersection's horrible, it needs a light. But because it does disrupt flow on the highway, the standards of warrants have been developed, one of which is the eight-hour warrant. And so to share with you the numbers, and it's a function of how many lanes are on the highway and how many lanes are on the other road, the approach road. For the conditions on Route 33 and Yellowbrook, we would have to have 350 vehicles every hour on the highway, on Route 33, for eight hours, at least eight hours of the day. We would also have to have, and I'll say it ranges, but either 84 vehicles per hour or 105 vehicles per hour on Yellowbrook Road. And we have gone through that standard as well as a second standard that raises the limit on the highway, meaning there has to be more highway traffic, but lowers the volume on the side street to as low as 42 vehicles per hour. So that's fairly light. We've also reviewed what's called a four-hour warrant. Not often used, but it is part of the MUTCD and Standards for Justifying a Traffic Signal. We also looked at the peak hour warrant, which is just as the name implies. It is a much higher standard for traffic on both roads to determine, is there sufficient traffic? And on page 10 of our report...
And which report?
I'm sorry. This is the Traffic Signal Warrant Analysis for Route 33 and Yellowbrook. On page 10, Table Roman numeral 8, we have shown the highway volumes and the traffic on Yellowbrook Road for each hour between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So we've got 11 hours of data. And in those 11 hours, we meet 10 hours for one of the warrants. And it's not like we almost make it. We exceed that amount. We have also reviewed the peak hour wa, I'm sorry, the four-hour warrant, and we exceed seven. So we meet four hours, and then we exceed two more. And we meet the peak hour warrant as well. So those are the standards. Again, they're taken right from the federal MUTCD that is used by New Jersey Department of Transportation to indicate a signal's warranted, not by one warrant, not by two, but by three. And so we've documented it. We are routinely making these types of petitions to the state on behalf of either municipal clients or developer clients, and we follow the same methodology.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add on the record so the board understands what's used to create that analysis. Thank you.
Jennifer. Board, do you all have any further questions? Traffic analysis?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
My next witness tonight is Christine Caphone. She is our planner.
I swear this testimony you give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Help me out.
I do.
Have your name for the record, please.
Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Caphone, C, O as in Oreos, F as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Witness is sworn.
Thank you.
Ms. Caphone, can you please provide your qualifications to the board?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Christine Caphone. I'm a licensed professional planner. I've testified before this board and about 410 or 20 other boards throughout the state of New Jersey as a professional planner. I am currently an affordable housing special master in about 25 different municipalities. I'm also an adjunct land use instructor for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, where I teach planning and zoning courses. And I'm also an adjunct instructor for Monmouth University. I taught a course in the spring, Special Topics in Real Estate. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers. I also, in addition, the lion's share of my practice is expert witness testimony, but my firm also does some municipal work. We represent the Casino Redevelopment Authority and a number of other government agencies.
Mr. Gazarovski. Any objection?
I have no.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Caphone, can you please talk to the board about what you reviewed for your testimony for tonight?
Sure. So I reviewed the application submission documents and all of our team's reports. I reviewed your professionals' review letters, specifically your planner's review letters and your engineer's most recent review letter as of today's date. I reviewed the minutes from prior meetings for the ones that I wasn't at, and I had an opportunity to visit the subject property and the site, and my client was kind enough to drive me around the area so that I could become familiar with not only his site, but some of the other operations in the sites in the area as well. I looked at the master plan and the zoning ordinance, so my preparation for this hearing was pretty extensive.
Okay. I'm going to step out of the way and let you go ahead and testify.
Okay. So we are here before the zoning board of adjustment because we need a D variance for the proposed concrete facility, which is not a permitted use in the SED zoning district where it is located. We are also asking for a D variance for the height of the silos. At prior meetings, I know that it was determined that those silos are part of the principal permitted use, so therefore they are subject to the height requirements of the permitted use. And at 90 feet tall, they do violate the height requirements. So as a D1, and we do need two bulk variances as well. In addition to the D variance for the use and the height of the silos, we need a variance for accessory structures in our front yard and for the width of the driveway. So to the extent that the board does not consider the bulk variances subsumed into the D, which I think you certainly can, we'll put some testimony on as to the statutory criteria that you can grant those bulk variances under, in my opinion, but I just wanted to point out that we do need those two variances. Other than that, it's a pretty conforming application. So if the board pleases, I can get right into the statutory proofs which are required for a D1 use variance. So the first thing that we would have to demonstrate to the board is that the site is particularly suited for the proposed use. Having an opportunity to have been out to the site and knowing that current concrete pipe operated a concrete plan on the site for some 50-odd years, and pairing that with what is in this particular area is, for me as a planner, very easy to come to the conclusion that the subject property is particularly suitable for this use. In addition to the historic use of the property for concrete manufacturing, the character of this area is well-established with very commercial-intensive industrial uses. Our immediate neighbor to the south is manufacturing concrete pavers. Across the street is a concrete plant that most recently was running trucks at night to do paving projects. There is a construction yard in this area for George Harms, a gun-shooting range, sanitation uses. It's just, you know, a pretty commercially SED. It's really the heart of your SED zone. The other reason I think the site is particularly suitable for the proposed concrete facility is, we are proximate, we have a direct route to 533. So I think that that's certainly going to be excellent for L&L to run their business and get their trucks, you know, to the regional highway with minimal disturbance to any of the areas.
You meant 33.
What did I say?
533.
I was going to say 533, I said 33.
33.
Yes, 533. 533. So for that reason, I, as a planner, I mean, if you have an opportunity to go out and look at the subject site and go to this area, I think you would be very challenged to find that this piece of property is not particularly suitable for this proposed facility. In addition, as far as the silos, when I was out there on, I think it was, I guess it was Friday morning of last week I was out there, and I noticed that New Jersey American Water Company, which is really a couple properties down to the south from our property, has a substantial tower on it, and the anchor concrete site also has some pretty tall silos on it. So the fact that we're asking for a D6 variance for the height of our silos, this is not a condition, you know, where we're introducing into this SED zone structures that are this tall. They exist out there already. The water tower is, you know, through information provided me by my client, we believe that tower to be about 140 feet. So I just don't see where these silos would have a substantial negative impact. And I'll get to the negative criteria testimony a little bit later in my testimony, but one of the things that I think is really important, or I found compelling from a planning point of view about the height of those towers, is the height of those towers allows us to store product. So while we're a 24-hour operation, which is completely permissible in the SED zone, 24 hours is no problem at all here. By ordinance, you're allowed to do it. Having the silos allows us to store our material so we can run and fill trucks during the night, and we have a circulation route for that, but we don't need to manufacture in the night. So having the silos at 90 feet allows us the storage capacity to do that, and even though the SED zone does not disallow nighttime activity, it does allow for us to not manufacture at night and to fill our trucks. So those are the two D variances. The C variances are for the accessory structures in the front yard. I believe the board, it wasn't this board, actually, it was a planning board application in 2014. There was a prior grant of an approval to have accessory structures in the front yard on this site. So I see no, given the character of this area and the fact that we are proposing, I don't know, do we have that marked up there, whatever on the board?
That's, I think that's A1.
Okay, so A...
Let me just double-check.
So, well, for argument's sake, the property will be screened. We're proposing a six-foot-high berm along Yellowbrook, which is, if I'm standing up tall, that's actually taller than I am, then with six-to-eight-foot-high evergreens planted on top of that. So given the character of this area and the fact that we are proposing a substantial berm with significant evergreens on top of it, I don't see any problem or any impact to, negative impact associated with those two, with the structures in the front yard. So the purposes of municipal land use law that I think are advanced by this application, and statutorily, we would have to advance one or more of the purposes of the land use law in order to sustain our proofs. So I think Criteria G, which talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And that's Criteria G. I believe that is advanced. Criteria M, which talks about encouraging coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping a more efficient use of the land, I think that's advanced here. I think, you know, as a planner practicing for almost 23 years, the redevelopment, or, you know, small R redevelopment, not that this isn't a redevelopment area, but the revitalization of existing sites is certainly consistent with smart growth and reutilization of existing. The client is not intending to demolish the site in its entirety. There are portions of the building that we are repurposing and revitalizing, so I do think this is an efficient, compact use of the land. The other thing I would say to that is, we are removing substantial amounts of impervious coverage. I believe, Mr., your minutes reflect 11 acres. Mr. Kennedy's testimony reflects 13 acres. So I think that it's 13 acres based on what I reviewed in the documents for being removed on the site, which is substantial. I mean, it's a 35-acre site, and we're removing 35 acres of impervious coverage.
13.
13. Sorry, it's a 35-acre site, we're removing 13. So I think this is a very efficient use of the land. And then I would also rely on Criteria H here, which talks about to encourage the location and design of transportation routes and things which promote the free flow of traffic. You've already heard Mr. Dean's testimony that we will have far less of a traffic impact than other uses that would otherwise be permitted in the zone. And that certainly, there's a problem at the intersection right now, and that we would contribute our pro-rata share for the late. So when you have a use that's before you, that would provide far less traffic than other permissible uses in the zone, sort of difficult to not want to rely on that Criteria H. So I do think G, H, and M are the criteria that, from a planning point of view, the board can absolutely rely on to establish the positive criteria in this case. And again, I would remind the board that our statutory criteria requires we only advance one, and I believe that we advance three. So as a non-inherently beneficial use, we have to demonstrate to the board the Medici Enhanced Reconciliation, Enhanced Reconciliation, that even though the governing body doesn't allow for this use in the zone, that it's still not going to have a substantial detriment. Now, there was a 2017 ordinance amendment that actually took this use out of the permitted use list in the zone. So certainly from a reconciliation point, that's something that we need to address from a planning point of view. And I think, you know, I just get back to the fact that the character of this area is so well-established with manufacturing, and this subject property has a concrete manufacturing plant on it today. So it's very difficult for me to come to the conclusion that even with that ordinance amendment, that's still, this is still not an appropriate location for this use, because I certainly believe that it is. So then in addition to the positive criteria and the Medici reconciliation, we have to testify to, or I have to testify, to the negative criteria. And the negative criteria really has two prongs to it. The first is the impact on the zone plan. The second is the impact on the public good. So when we... So when we are referring to the negative criteria, the land use law does not ask you to hold this or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment at all, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance would outweigh any detriments. So when I had an opportunity to review the planner's review letter in this application, there were a few statements in there that I felt were pretty compelling and spoke directly to the negative criteria. So in the May 2nd planning review, May 2nd, 2018 of this year, there were comments that read, "Site parking, circulation, and landscaping receive a significant overhaul and improvement in the current proposal. The new configuration presents several significant changes and improvements over the previous site layouts. There are 13 acres of impervious surface removed and replaced with lawn area, which reduces the site coverage from 81.79% to 44.9%, and that eliminates a variance for lot coverage on the property." In addition, we're proposing 250 trees on this property, and the site is only contributing to 0.5% traffic, of traffic at the intersection of Yellow Brook and 33. Then, on his direct testimony, Mr. Reddell testified that when loading trucks for overnight paving, we are prepared operationally to put a number of things in effect to mitigate any negative impacts that might be associated with this. We're proposing to put strobe lights on our vehicles, shut off the alarms, and he actually testified that he would provide his cell number to ensure that there would be operationally no disturbance in the area. And this is a 24-hour operation, which, again, totally permissible in the SED zone, no problem with that. We have a nighttime circulation route plan that will utilize our west, eastern most driveway, I think it is.
We've been calling it northern.
Okay, northern. So we'll go with that, then the northernmost driveway. So we will use that, and I think the fact that we have, you know, we have implemented a nighttime plan to minimize the impacts to this area. So, and that, and combined with our berms, I think really you have a situation here where we're not having any substantial detriment. The one place that we would have had a negative impact was to the property owner, the two residential lots to our north, which we would not have met the noise requirements of the state statute on, but we've agreed to abandon those residential uses. So with a site now that has no, we can comply with the noise statutes, we're building a sound wall, we're increasing landscaping, we're doing all of these things, then what becomes the negative criteria? I mean, unless your criteria is rooted in something other than the land use impacts, I'm not sure how you get to the impact that there is a substantial detriment here, given the character of this area. So, I mean, when we drove around and we drove to all of the other uses, I found it, you know, really to be quite consistent with the character of this area. So I would think that if there was a negative impact, in my opinion, as a professional planner, that impact would have to be generating from something other than an impact to the land, because we're not degrading the traffic patterns, we're not having a substantial detriment with respect to noise, we're substantially improving the landscaping and the appearance of the property, we're eliminating non-conformities with respect to coverage. So, you know, these are all the things that we would be guided by as planners to look at. So that's the impact on the public good. When you look at the impact on the zone plan and say, okay, this use isn't permitted in the SED zone, so is allowing it here gonna have a substantial detriment? So what is the purpose of the SED zone? The purpose of the SED zone, this is not my words, this comes right out of the ordinance, 188-79, "The purpose of the SED zone is to provide for a variety of economic development opportunities in areas of the township where rail and highway infrastructure are already available." So I certainly think that this application does that. The principal permitted uses in this zone include offices, financial institutions, medical centers, warehousing and distribution, assembly and packing, packaging, utility uses, agriculture and forestry, and then manufacturing of food and kindred products, textile products, apparel and similar finished products made from fabrics, lumber and wood products, furniture and fixtures, paper and allied products, printing and publishing, manufacturing of leather products, stone, glass, clay, and concrete products, fabricated metal products, electronic and electrical equipment. So there are some really intensive things that are permissible in this district, all of which would have truck traffic associated with them. So as a planner, I am really challenged to see how this application is rising to the level of a substantial detriment. I think we meet our statutory burden of proof with respect to particular suitability, with respect to the positive criteria, with respect to the Medici reconciliation, and with respect to the negative criteria. So even though this zone, this use is disallowed in the SED zone, I still believe from a planning point of view that there are a number of goals that would be advanced in your master plan that was done and amended in 2017. So specifically, when you look at the comprehensive goals, one of those goals in the master plan was to continue to be a stable and diverse community through the provision of a balanced land use pattern, to encourage the establishment of policies, codes, and standards that promote the use of sustainable development practices. I think you heard a lot of testimony from L&amp;L, how they plan to operate this in a sustainable manner, including but not necessarily limited to infrastructure, public and private buildings, open space, and it goes on to list other things. And then this was the one that I found really compelling, this comprehensive objective. Evaluate the potential for economic and rehabilitation plans in strategic locations within the township. Where appropriate, to encourage sound land use development that can provide economic development opportunities while at the same time balancing the preservation of neighborhood character as well as the protection of environmental resources. So some of the words that I thought were so relevant to this application were strategic locations. I mean, this is an SED zone with a plant that manufactures pavers next to us, a plant that manufactures concrete across the street from us, an asphalt, and a commercial area. So if this is not a strategic location for this use, then I don't know what is, and there's a concrete plant on our property today. And then one that says the preservation of neighborhood character. So I think that certainly this use is consistent with the neighborhood character and the protection of environmental resources. The reduction of 13 acres of impervious surface certainly speaks to the production, the protection of environmental resources. So I feel like that last goal in the comprehensive objectives section in your master plan was really just very, very solidly advanced by this application. So when you have a use that is particularly suitable, such as I believe this one is, that meets the positive criteria, has the Medici reconciliation satisfied, and has really, I mean, I don't even see a detriment, let alone a substantial detriment, which is what the statute requires, to the grant of this variance. And I think it allows you to implement your master plan and see this site put to, you know, a significantly upgraded use, and I think you, L&amp;L, would be an excellent corporate citizen for Harrell Township. And I certainly think that the statutory criteria is satisfied, and the board can grant this application for these variances with no substantial detriment. So I should probably talk about that 25-foot driveway, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes, because we need a C-variance for the width of the driveway. So the only thing I will say about that from a planning point of view is, if the driveway can function safely and efficiently at 25 feet, and I believe your fire department has reviewed it and approved it, and if your fire department has reviewed it and approved it, and our design team, including our site civil engineer, Mr. Kennedy, as well as our traffic engineer, Mr. Dean, the collective talent of the fire department and those two engineers believe this to be safe and efficient, then I see no reason from a planning point of view for myself or anyone else to conclude otherwise. So I have nothing further on direct. If there's something you want me to go back over, or the board has any questions, I'm certainly happy to do that.
I have no more direct questions. I don't have the board or the panel's had any questions.
Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, I really have to say, I don't take any exception to the testimony as provided. I think when you look at the prongs required for a D1 variance, you look at particular suitability, I think it's absolutely relevant what the site has been used for in the past. I think it's relevant as, you know, what the neighborhood uses and the surrounding uses are. I think there's been testimony by, and I apologize, I'm probably gonna kill her last name, Ms. Sutton?
Sutton.
Ms. Sutton. You know, she testified that the equipment that's being brought to this plant is far and away beyond the New Jersey standards. They're, I guess, being held to California standards as, and that they're really not gonna have a noise impact. I think we finally got to the root of the noise testimony today, and that once that site immediately adjacent is abandoned, as per the testimony from the applicant, the sensitive receptors would be in compliance with the noise standards. The traffic testimony that's been provided between the last meeting last week and tonight show that, you know, compared to what would be allowed on the property, the traffic impacts are significantly less for this use than before. And as well as going through the positive criteria, I don't know, Christine, I think criteria H is a bit of a stretch, but I would submit that maybe criteria I would also qualify because the site, if all of you who are intimately familiar with what the site looked like before these guys took it over, was in significant disrepair. It's been significantly cleaned up. All that concrete pipe that was out on the road is gone. So I think that there are significant benefits to this site being adaptively reused. I do agree that the reduction of 13 acres of impervious is not an insignificant benefit, especially in this area that historically has had some drainage problems. And so I would take no exception to the testimonies provided with respect to the D-variance. I agree, again, on the height variance for the silos. I know we went back and forth whether the silos were accessory or principal, and that it was ultimately decided that they were part of the principal operation, but I do agree that having them at the height as testified to would enable the storage of material, reduce the overall requirement for the plant to actually physically make product. And they're located on the site such that they really don't create a visual impact as far as what's in and around the area. There are other silos, towers in the immediate vicinity, so I don't take any exception to the testimony on the height. And then the two C-variances, I agree, I'm looking at the Fire Bureau letter dated April 20th, taking no exception to the width of the driveways, and that the berming and the landscaping along Yellow Brook Road would hide any accessory or storage that's in the front. So as far as I'm concerned, I feel that the applicant has met its burden under the law.
Mr. Mallon.
Yes. Christine, I'm trying to echo what Jennifer said about the screening for the outdoor storage in the front yard. Have you, are you gonna give testimony on the portions of the ordinance that require the 75 feet for the facade and 50 feet for the walls irregularity? Or is someone else gonna make that representation based upon the design standards for the commercial property or non-residential properties?
Well, I had, I had brought an architect in the past. I wasn't, he wasn't asked to come up and testify. We can bring him up, or I can, we can typically go through the criteria with Ms. Caphone.
Well, you know, the requirements are pretty straightforward.
Right.
In the past, we've had, we've had differences in the facades where they changed the outside vertical versus horizontal, so it doesn't look like one great big wall where they have... Is there, maybe...
I certainly understand the question, Mr. Mallon. The question is, you're asking me, is there anything we're gonna do to treat these buildings to avoid the appearance of a monolithic wall? So one big line of a wall with no breaks or architectural interest to break that up?
And if I, if I can, I pause them. I'm looking for architectural plans.
Okay.
That's what I'm putting.
Yeah, I just don't remember seeing it. I remember a testimony. If they can comply with it, then that's fine.
Well, there is, there are two buildings on site that are, that, there's two buildings on site that that would be applicable for.
Right.
One was already approved in the minor subdivision.
Okay.
That would be the shop building.
Okay, correct.
Located towards the front of the, I guess, the middle front of the property. And the other building would be the remainder of the storage, which is...
But they're expanding that, aren't they? They doing some expansion on that?
No, what's happening is that, if you look at A24, if I can give a pointer? If you look at, if you look at exhibit A, if this is exhibit A24, which is up on the, on the screen, let's see, okay. Toward the south of the property, you'll see a rectangle, beige rectangle. That's the remainder portion of the existing concrete plant that's coming down. There's a storage building, I think, I'm gonna probably, it's a 10,000-square-foot storage building. That's remaining and being rehabilitated. The other, like I said, the other, the other building on the property, the architectural design waiver with grant and pink deadline are still with it.
You're talking about the existing block building. It's gonna be storage for the trucks and maintenance.
It's, so it's identified, so the building that was, that was already approved is identified as an existing shop building, the remain.
That's the bigger building.
That's the, that's the bigger building in this, kind of in the center.
It's existing, correct?
They, they came in for a minor state plan, I don't know, like, two years ago?
2016, I think.
Yeah, to the planning board at the time, and that building was part of that approval at the time.
Correct.
And that building is part, you know, has been approved previously.
So it's not applicable to this application?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, then the rehabilitation wouldn't be applicable either to those design standards, correct?
Well, the existing building, if they were expanding on it, but the one piece we could get them to do, but that's already been through the board and everything, so...
Right.
Okay.
And that, that building is not being expanded. It's the existing concrete facility, which is kind of surrounding it, is coming down, and the back portion of it is remaining up.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board, Ms. Caphone? Okay. At this time, C and I, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and then we'll move to cross-examination of witnesses. Mr. Kazereski?
You have cross from the public as well as from you?
No, from you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The board will now recess. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, at this point, we're gonna open for cross-examination from opposing attorney. Mr. Butler, could you have your witness, please state his name for the record, and also he was previously sworn?
Mr. Reddell, can you just state your name once again to the record? First name Lance, last name Reddell, R-E-D-A-E-L-L-I. And Mr. Reddell, I just wanna remind you that you were placed under oath at a prior meeting, and you still remain under oath today. Okay, great.
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Reddell. My name is Ron Kazereski. I'm an attorney with offices at Red Bank, New Jersey, and I represent the Ball Lees Inc., who owns property in the township of Harrell. And I believe you do know, this is the along building that's associated with Savolli as well as Savolli itself in the area.
I do.
And I think for a number of years, you were a customer of theirs.
Yes.
And I think in your testimony, in your direct testimony, you said that they cut you off from selling the product. Is that correct?
Did you say that in your prior testimony? They, they no longer sell to us.
Well, they refused to sell to you?
I think he's answered the question.
He didn't answer the question. He gave specific testimony in the initial hearing.
Intimating that they were not selling to him because they were objectors in this particular application. Now, you were in cut-off from buying product from the Savolli's, were you?
I'm gonna object to this line of questioning. I'm not sure what this has to do with the application from the board.
I think it's relevant, if I may, for this reason. Mr. Brendanelli, as I read the transcript, tried to clearly give the impression that this was in some way, some type of anti-competitive or some spiteful action on my client's part, when it's simply not true, and I want him to respond to the question.
I, I understand. So just for the record, Mr. Kazereski, you represent...
So just for the record, Mr. Gazarovski, you represent Stavola Leasing or Stavola Asphalt?
I represent Stavola Leasing.
And what does that have to do with selling asphalt?
His testimony was that, his testimony was that Stavola Asphalt, who has a facility in this area, has prevented him from purchasing materials to him, which he utilized in an effort to convince this board that it was necessary for him to construct his plant because there was nowhere else in the area that he could buy asphalt.
Mr. Gazarovski, is Stavola Asphalt your client or Stavola Leasing?
Stavola Leasing is my client.
Okay. I have to kind of agree with Mr. Butler. If the asphalt company is not your client, then where does this question lead us?
Well, if, if the asphalt's not my client and he refuses to answer my question, then his earlier testimony with regard to that should be stricken from the record.
He didn't, he didn't answer, he didn't refuse to answer the question. The question was, can you get asphalt from Stavola Asphalt Company? The answer was no.
Okay.
Okay. How are you presently utilizing this property, Mr. Rendanelli?
We use it as our, our business paving company, L&amp;L Paving Company.
Okay. And is it the same use you had when you were operating in Titten Falls?
Yes.
Now, at the present site, are you manufacturing asphalt?
Once again, I'm going, I am going to object, the present, the present use of the property has nothing to do with the current application.
I agree.
I take it that in your earlier testimony, you gave a kind of a historical background of your business, did you not?
Yes.
And I believe you stated that you initially worked with your dad, then at a given point in time, you and your brother decided to go into business for yourself.
Yes.
And I take it that your testimony was that that business for yourself was in Titten Falls?
It did not start in Titten Falls, no.
Well, where did it start?
It started at my wife's grandfather's backyard in his property in Wall Street in West Long Branch.
Okay. And then there ultimately came a point in time when you purchased a piece of property in Titten Falls?
Yes.
And how, how big was that piece of property?
Six acres.
And what was the nature of your use of that property, beginning when you started, up until the time I believe you testified that you sold the property?
We ran our paving business, L&amp;L Paving Company, out of that, and then we went for a, an approval to build storage garages in their back, and we used that as rental income.
Okay. Now, with regard to your paving business that you operated out of Titten Falls, as I read the transcript, I believe you stated that you basically would do patchwork, correct?
Yes, and we still do today.
Driveways?
Yes.
Parking lots?
Yes.
I think you also had, you had a contract, I think, with the water company to do repairs for them.
Yes.
Was it also your testimony, was it not, that you didn't do turnpike work or parkway work?
Yes.
Okay. Just an aside, and I'll go further into it, if you don't do parkway work, you don't do turnpike work, why do you have to construct an asphalt plant that could...
I'm going to object. I don't see there's a connection between the two.
I'm not allowed that question. Go ahead.
If you don't do parkway work, you don't do turnpike work, tell me then why you have to construct and seek a use variance on this site to construct a plant that can manufacture 400 tons of asphalt an hour and construct six silos that collectively can house 1,800 cubic yards of concrete, asphalt rather, at a time?
Well, we are a purchaser of approximately 50,000 tons of this exact product every year.
50,000 tons a year?
Approximately. Number two, there's one supplier of this product in Monmouth County, one.
Okay.
We feel, my brother and I, that there's an absolute need for an additional supplier of this product. We've always believed that competition is good. That's why.
I understand that. Now, when you say you believe there's a necessity of another plant such as this, you're not speaking of yourself, you're speaking of other potential users such as you, who may want to buy asphalt from you rather than other competitors?
Yes.
You want to be in the asphalt business?
Yeah.
You want to have six silos that can hold 1,800...
Mr. Gazarovski, let's tone it down a little, please.
Tone it down?
Tone it down a little.
Tone it down?
Yes.
You turned down the speaker's phone, or...
Hold it, hold it, Mike.
And I would apologize to the board.
Thank you, sir.
You, you want to be a manufacturer of asphalt to sell this asphalt throughout not only Monmouth and Ocean County, but other counties as well, do you not?
I'm not sure when my brother and I went into this, that we thought about selling this product outside of Monmouth County, Mr. Gazarovski, in all due respect. It was to supply not only ourselves, but other buyers of this material.
Okay. And you wanted to operate this plant, I take it, at full capacity, correct?
We would operate it based on market demand. That's how we would operate it.
Well, I listened very carefully to the testimony of Ms. Sutton Choate. And if you operate this barrel device at full capacity for eight hours, at 400 tons an hour, you manufacture in eight hours, 3,200 tons, correct?
I'm going to object, that wasn't what she said.
I agree.
What was that?
That wasn't what she testified to.
She said, she said that the barrel could produce 400 tons of asphalt an hour.
I believe what she testified to is if you did that, you'd run out of storage space.
Funny. I can't hear you, you're not speaking into the microphone.
I'm sorry. She testified that if you did that, you would run out of storage space.
You would run out of storage space for the silos that are there, but if you're simultaneously both manufacturing and distributing product out of the silos, it could be a break-even over a period of eight hours. But that's your intention, is it not?
That's not what, that's not what she testified to.
I, I agree. That's, it is... Do you want to respond?
Respond as follows.
Am I, I'm sorry, are you looking at me?
No.
Oh, okay. If, if you can answer, if you know what the question is and you can answer it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I lost what the question was. My apologies. I'm sorry.
Do you, do you know how many tons of asphalt per hour this facility you're placing on the site and manufacturing?
I know what we were told, that is a, that it is a 400-ton per hour facility.
So if every hour you were to operate it, for whatever number of hours you were to operate and multiply that, that's what your product could be during the course of a day?
Under best-case scenarios, yes.
Okay. Let's talk about the storage silos. You're seeking approval to construct six storage silos, are you not?
I believe it's on our plan, showing three right now, and three additional if needed.
You're, you're showing an application to construct six storage silos. Whether you construct them now or next year, that's the approval you're seeking, is it not?
Yes.
Now, as I understand in the explanation of how these storage silos work, you may select a particular product to be manufactured, and whatever the amount of tons that is ordered, they are then stored in that silo and then, of course, dropped into trucks that come underneath to pick them up. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay. So if, in a, in a typical case scenario, if you had to order for 300 tons of a particular grade of asphalt, you would begin manufacturing it depending upon when the customer would pick it up, correct?
Yes.
And then you, by conveyor, you would run it up to the storage silos, 300 tons, you'd fill it up completely, and then the trucks from your purchaser would roll in to pick up the, the manufactured asphalt.
Yes.
Now, it's my understanding that these trucks hold 20 tons of asphalt?
They also could hold 25 tons. Those are tri-axle sizes. 20 tons is traditional tandem size.
Okay, so just for, for the sake of this argument, let's assume it's 20 tons, so if you were to empty out that full load of 300 tons, what would that come out to by way of number of trucks?
15.
Okay. And how long would it take you to empty out that silo of 300 tons?
I'm not 100% sure, Mr. Gazarovski, but I would say at a safe number, maybe three minutes, four minutes?
Per truck?
Yes.
So using your broad stroke, would take you 45 minutes to an hour to empty out the silo?
Yes.
Now, if it were 15 trucks, that would mean there were 15 trucks coming in that were empty to pick up the load, and then 15 trucks coming out to take the material away from the site, which would mean 30 trucks for that one silo in one hour.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Gazarovski? You said 300 tons of product for one company, correct? One company?
I didn't say for one company. I, I said if you...
300 tons of product, I believe you said for one customer to come in, they want, they ordered 300 tons, you put it up in the silo.
Okay, let's assume I said that. And I probably did. I, I said that if you were to get an order for 300 tons and you were to manufacture 300 tons, you would roll it in the barrel, set it up to conveyors, and store it in the silo, and then you would dispense it to the trucks coming enough underneath to pick it up.
Right. And, and with that scenario, if that was one supplier, let's say that one supplier was L&amp;L Paving, okay? And we put up, we ordered 300 ton of asphalt, and we're paving a job, 300 tons. It's not 15 trucks, it's 15 loads, okay? What we would typically do for 300 ton is we would use about, depending on how far we're traveling, four trucks, five trucks, to make those loads to equal up to 300 ton. An example was, we paved Elmwood Avenue in West Long Branch. It was about 550 tons, okay? We drove from West Long Branch to Ocean County, to Earl Asphalt, and came back, 500-plus ton. We rented five trucks plus our own two. That's seven trucks that brought in 500, and I believe 50 tons of material. We don't rent a truck for one load. That truck wants to be rented for an eight-hour day. So what we do is we say, we have 500 ton to put down, 600 ton to put down. How far is the distance? How many trucks do we need to rent? And then that's how we do it. We don't say we need 300 ton, everybody get one load and go home for the day. It doesn't work that way.
I understand that. I drove a truck once, I understand.
I'm not sure I helped you in this situation, but that's the way we do it on a day-to-day basis.
It did help me, and I understand that you're saying that, for example, you may put a job together and use five trucks to empty out the silo of 300 tons, correct?
For the day, yes.
Yeah, but that would mean that in order to empty out that silo, there would have to be a total of 15 trips into the site and 15 trips out of the site, for a total of 30 trips. Whether you do it with 10 trucks, five trucks, or 15 trucks, correct?
I, I believe your math is correct, but I look at it a difference of, it's not 30 different trucks around, I mean, it's not 30 trucks for me driving up and down the parkway every day. It's five trucks driving up and down the parkway.
I understand.
There's a big difference between 30 trucks driving up and down the parkway and five making the loads.
I understand that, okay.
Okay. I don't know, am I not being, I'm sorry if I'm being unclear about what I'm saying.
Don't, don't, don't be sorry.
I, I apologize.
Don't apologize.
How many, let me, let me rephrase. How many trips would 300 tons take to move out?
Mr. Chairman?
At 20 tons?
If you can paint a picture, how far am I driving? Let's just say we were doing Route 33, which is literally at the end of our road, right? And we wanted to put down that particular day 500 ton. I would go to my foreman and say, hey, listen, we're only working down the street. How many trucks, how many times can they come to the plant back and forth? If they're coming to Howell, literally right down the street, it's going to be significantly less, maybe four, as if I had to go to, say, Jackson, I'm going to have to put on probably seven or eight more.
Correct.
So it's going to increase it by a lot.
I, I understand, but if you've got 300 tons, divide that by 20, that's 15 loads.
That is correct.
I don't, I don't care if it takes you eight hours, but it's still 15 trips. It's not 30 trips, it's 15 trips. You know, the truck coming in is not, that's considered a trip, but that's a loop trip. You know, it's not, wouldn't count as two.
If the job was close enough, Mr. Chairman, that, that, I could have as little as three to four trucks.
I, I understand that, but it's still going to take 15 trips to move...
Loads. Loads, okay.
Right, it's still going to take 15 loads.
Okay, loads and trips, are we talking about the same thing?
Well, it's, it's 15 trips. Round trips, it's 15 round trips, no matter how many trucks you put on. You could put, you know, it might be one round trip per truck if you put 15 trucks.
Okay.
But if you've got three trucks, then it's five round trips.
Well, that would expand the time, yes.
Right. It's over-expanding period of time, but it's still 15 loads going out.
Okay.
Now, if, if you're going to go into a trip generation, then that, that's, that's a different scenario. You know, 15 loads is 15 loads, but, you know, if you do it in an hour, that's 15 trips in that one hour.
Okay.
But if you're spreading it over the, over a period of day, it's five trips with three trucks over a period of eight-hour period of time to move it. Does that answer your question, where you're, where you were at with that?
Well, the one, the one issue I have with the way the chairman posed it is that when you're measuring trip generation, you have to measure the trucks coming onto the site as well as the trucks leaving the site, because they're traveling on the same roadway, just in a reversed position. In other words, a truck may be coming from a site, let's say in Jackson or whatever it may be, they've got to travel over the road, come into the facility, that load is a trip, is a truck, and then they've got to load up and go out. So you've got to multiply the number of, of product being sold by two. Two load, two, two trips per load, coming in and coming out, but we can get into that with our traffic.
Okay.
I was just going to say, it's probably a better, more appropriate question for Mr. D.
To the traffic, but I, I understand, first, he's coming from because he's a plant operator. He doesn't look at it as coming in and going out. He looks at it as a round trip. You know, which I, I could understand that.
Well, but that, but that's part, that's part of the impact that this facility would have on the area.
Once again, I think it's the traffic, the traffic.
The traffic engineer would review it in terms of the in and out. He's looking at this from an operational standpoint.
Exactly. That, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Now, having said that, when you, when you speak in terms of competition, there are in fact other asphalt plants located in Ocean County, are there not?
Yes.
And there's some that are located in the northern part of Ocean County.
If you, if you know the answer to the question?
I don't know that answer.
Well, do you ever go to the Earl site in Ocean County?
Yes, sir, I just stated that before. That's where we're going on a regular basis right now.
Okay, and what town is that located in?
Jackson.
Okay. That's northern, that's, matter of fact, Jackson abuts Monmouth County, does it not?
I do not know that.
Okay. Okay. Now, there's another supplier also located close to the Earl plant.
I'm going to object, I'm not sure what this has to do with the current application.
You know, one of the reasons why he's giving as to why he's seeking this use variance, he said he's seeking a use variance because it's either impossible or impractical for him to buy product locally, but yet there are in fact existing plants in addition to my clients located in close proximity.
Let me ask a question. How far is Earl Plant from, from your, your office?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's 20 miles, 25 miles?
Okay.
And, and, and just, just for the record, I mean, Mr. Gazarovski asked the question, do you want to be a producer of asphalt? And the answer was yes. And, and, and I want to go back to something that Mr. Gazarovski just said before. He once again said you can't buy product from my client.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, you did.
I, I said that he said that he couldn't buy product from my client. I didn't say he couldn't buy it from my client. Matter of fact, my client is hoping to sell a product.
Yes. Yes, your client has.
Real estate.
Your real estate client is selling asphalt.
No, I take that back. Stavola Asphalt has, in fact, offered to sell product to this person.
You know that, Hal?
Thank you.
So where are you, there's another plant close by the Earl plant, is there not?
We're going down the same direction.
Yeah, they're still in the same general vicinity, correct?
He claims they're twenty-five miles away.
They, I would kind of be on agreements with them.
Don't look it up.
Now, let me ask you this. Regarding to your projects in Ocean County at the present time, are any of them located south of the Earl Plant?
Seven, oh, I'm sorry. Once again, I'm not sure what the point of this line of questioning is.
Okay, I'm going to allow that one.
I would say approximately seventy-five percent of our business is in Monmouth County, Mr. Gazarovski.
Okay. Now, let's talk a little bit about this property which you say you purchased in Hal Township. Now, can you tell me the year that you purchased it?
Yes.
If it's approximation, that's okay. And if you don't remember the exact year, that's okay also.
I believe it was in February of 2016.
I'm sorry, 2015 or 2016?
Twenty sixteen.
That was when you took title to the property?
If you know the answer to that question.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, Mr. Gazarovski, and it is something I should know.
No, no, just take your time, because I'm speaking in a much gentler voice now, so go slower. Well, let me perhaps give you some targets that might help you remember that.
Were you looking for a date?
No.
I know that you were before the planning board in September of 2016.
What was that?
I was trying to get him sort of like a signpost that he might be in.
I'm sure I could find out. Maybe we can move on to the next question?
Yes. Let's move forward, Mr. Gazarovski. Do you recall what time, when it was?
Mr. Chairman, I believe-
At this time?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, no.
Okay.
I apologize.
Maybe I can apologize, please. I know you were before the planning board in Hal, I think in September of 2016, so I would have to assume that you purchased the property prior to that date. Would that be correct?
I found it, Mr. Gazarovski. It seems to be in my notes here that we closed February ninth of 2016.
Okay. And I take it that that was when you closed title?
Yes.
You were represented by an attorney?
Yes.
Okay, now, you know when you signed the contract to purchase this property?
I don't, I'm not sure where he's going with this one.
That one I'd-
Yeah.
No, they closed.
Look, I want to know when he purchased his property, what his intention was. In other words-
Once again, I mean, I'm objecting that there's-
He wanted to be an asphalt plant.
Exactly, it's been asked and answered.
He wanted to be, I'll take that, if he wanted to, if this answer is when he purchased his property, that finish, please.
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, that finish, please.
I object to the whole line of questioning about what was, happened in 2016 and whether he had an attorney for the purchase of his property.
Okay. What's your intent on that question?
What I want to know is whether or not when he purchased this property, or he signed the contract to purchase this property, he was aware of the fact that he needed a use variance, or he would have needed a use variance, to construct an asphalt plant.
I'll allow that. Was, were you aware that you needed variance to do an asphalt plant?
At the time, I did not.
And, Mr. Chair, I just want to interject.
Yes.
That the zoning changed subsequent to that date in early. And you're not entitled to cross-examine me, Mr. Gazarovski, I'm interjecting my professional opinion to the board, who's my client.
Yes.
So you're representing your client, he's representing his client, I'm representing my client. So I'm going to interject. So the zoning changed subsequent to that date in early 2016.
Okay.
That is contrary to the testimony that was elicited at the zoning board's interpretation hearing.
Well, I wasn't here for that, so I don't know what was done then, and that's irrelevant to this.
But it really-
Irrelevant to this.
It really is irrelevant at this point.
It's respectfully, Mr. Chairman, it's not irrelevant, because the testimony and in the resolution of the zoning board concerning the interpretation, the board, if you recall, called for an opinion letter from Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard clearly stated, as was reinforced by Mr. Mall-
Once again, we're here because we're asking for a use variance. So there was an interpretation and we're following that direction by asking for a use variance.
I agree, Mr. Gazarovski, they are following the direction of the board at that point in time.
I'm sorry?
They are following what the board's recommendation at that period of time and that resolution was to do. That's why they're here today.
There's no testimony here that the board advised them at that time. The board found, the board found that a asphalt plant had not been permitted use in that, in the township since nineteen sixty-three.
Mr. Gazarovski, I have to disagree with you there. The board found that the applicant was in the wrong venue being at the planning board, that they needed a variance for them to continue with the asphalt plant. They needed a variance, that's what we found, based on information retained by Mr. Howard. As a professional to the board, you know, that was part of the decision that we rendered at that time, that they did need a variance.
Because it was not a permitted use.
Wait, once again, I mean, we're going back around this-
I don't want to relitigate the interpretation. I really don't want to go there.
Well, but the testimony, his testimony-
He's going again back to the same line of questioning.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I really can't even get in a word without my adversary here speaking over me.
Okay. Continue. What was your train of thought?
My train of thought was, and I've listened to the testimony of Mr. Rendinelli in his direct testimony, and if one listens to that, one would get the impression that when he bought this property, his intention was to build an asphalt plant, as, Mr. Chairman, you stated a few minutes ago.
I stated what Mr., what Lance had stated earlier in his testimony. It wasn't my opinion or anything else.
That's what he stated, I accept that.
That's what he stated.
Now-
That's all I said.
Having said that, he stated he wanted to build an asphalt plant. The fact of the matter is, when he bought this property in 2016, an asphalt plant was not a permitted use in that zone, and that's what the board-
Sir, that's why they came to the zoning board under an interpretation. They were at the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, may I just state my position so that you understand where I'm coming from?
State your position.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate your courtesy. When the applicant went before the planning board, the applicant's argument to the planning board was, and that was, by the way, that was subsequent to the first approval that he received from the planning board for just a minor site plan. In the very first genesis of this, he came, after he took title, he came to the planning board for a minor site plan with some small variances, and it was a resolution. When one goes through the transcript of the hearing before the planning board, there is no reference whatever to this being for an asphalt plant. You then came-
I'm going to object to Mr. Gazarovski's characterization of testimony.
Well, can you note his objection and let me finish, and then you can rule.
I note, I note the objection.
Okay.
So what then happened was, we went to the planning board and we objected.
We are-
No, strike, I'll be clearer. My client appeared before the planning board and stated to the planning board, you don't have jurisdiction to hear this application, because based upon the ordinance that was in place, asphalt plants were not a permitted use in this zone. And he was relying upon the ordinance which referred to leather goods and concrete, manufacturing of concrete products. And that was what we came before this board. The question to be determined was whether the manufacturing of concrete products, whether that would allow the manufacturing of asphalt. And this board decided, based upon the advice of both your engineer as well as your planner, that number one, even if the application was filed in 2016, which was prior to the most recent ordinance, because that was his argument, that when he made the application before the planning board, he didn't use variance because the time of application rule would have carried it, and therefore he was entitled to the benefit of the old ordinance. This board found, this board found that even the old ordinance did not permit the manufacturing of concrete or asphalt, only the manufacturing of asphalt.
Mr. Gazarovski, I got to stop you right there. That's not what this board based its decision on. This board based its decision on, if I'm, Mr. Howard can correct me if I'm wrong, but in 1964 ordinance or land use, that's what this board based its decision on, was the asphalt plants, asphalt products, everything was not allowed in any zone. That's what we base it on, not the ordinance that 2016 took over. We did not.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay? So when, when the, when that decision took place, the applicant then had to come back to the zoning board for his site plan rather than going to the planning board. Now, when he came back to the zoning board, that would have been after the 2017 ordinance had been passed, therefore the 2017 ordinance is what is controlling this application today, where that ordinance specifically said that the manufacturing of concrete and asphalt plants is prohibited. That's why he's here.
We know that.
If I could just interject and bring this back to why actually we're here. If we could just focus on cross-examination of the operational testimony that the applicant gave, that would be great, because the history lesson on how we got here is really irrelevant. And we're here now, so let's focus on what's going on now.
Yeah, I am focusing, and respectfully-
Listen, I'm not interested in rehashing it, I just want to move on. There's a lot of people sitting out here who have been very patient for months and months and months, while we're sitting here. I understand that, so move on.
So have I.
So move on.
But I'm entitled to present the historical perspective of this application.
But you are not presenting direct case testimony now.
We don't need to discuss, we don't need to go back on how we got here. We know why we're here. They need a variance, and that's what we're here.
Mr. Rendinelli, when you signed the contract-
Can I stop for one second?
Okay.
His last name is Reddy Alley.
I'm sorry, Reddy Alley?
Reddy Alley.
Why didn't you correct me six months ago? And I apologize for mispronouncing.
I don't know what you're talking about, but I just want to make sure you pronounce his name correctly.
And if I could just correct my attorney, it's Reddy Ellie.
Ah, there you go.
Like the color red.
There you go.
Reddy Ellie. And I didn't mean any of those.
I've been called worse, Mr. Gazarovski.
But-
Reddy Ellie, I'm sorry.
Let's move forward into the operational testimony. I, why we're here, or how we got to this point, I really do feel it's irrelevant. I think we need to get into, you know, what the operational testimony has been on the record, not what the planning board decided.
That was all part of his testimony though, before this board. I'm not making this up.
It was not.
Most certainly was.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Reddy Ellie, when did it first come to your attention that in order to proceed forward with this project which you're trying to be before this board for, that you needed a use variance?
Once again-
It goes back to the interpretation, Mr. Gazarovski.
That's what he became aware of.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you asked him to ask operational questions.
Yes, but let's move forward.
Wait a second. You know, this isn't a situation where we have an owner who may be an absentee owner who is not here, and has put forth his operations manager to testify. He is the owner of this property. He filed the application. He gave testimony to you, and I went through the record very closely, all the questions I'm asking him are things that he told this board.
I-
But which time, though? During the interpretation hearing or this hearing? Because this line of questioning, I don't remember him stating that.
Well, I will send you a copy of the transcript.
And once again, Mr. Chairman, you had asked Mr. Gazarovski to ask operational questions and to move on with his cross-examination.
And I will send to the board as well as to all the members a copy of the transcript of the hearing when he testified, also a copy of the transcript when he testified before the planning board, all of which is relevant to this application.
Mr. Tropally, I'm going to ask you the-
I've been very patient also listening, and I've heard everyone. Mr. Gazarovski, the simple fact of the matter is that he's here for a use variance, this board has taken jurisdiction. You've made reference, and I've given you quite a lot of latitude in making reference to planning board matters, what the applicant may or may not have known as a use variance, what went on in the interpretation hearing. He's here, it's a use variance, we've taken jurisdiction.
Whatever, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's quite all right, but I think you've made your point in spades, quite frankly, and I think it's time to move on. I'm not going to curtail your cross-examination. I agree with the planner, I agree with the chairman. It's time to move it forward respectfully.
All of that goes, whatever he said before the planning board, whatever he said before the zoning board, that all goes to his credibility as far as his testimony this evening.
And this board does not have the record of proceedings, nor should they take it under consideration. The board can weigh the responses that are being given, as well as your questions, and weigh it in any fashion that they wish. And I ask you to continue, Mr. Gazarovski.
Yes. Now, I'm sorry, Reddine Ellie, right?
I mean, if you wanted to correct it, it's Reddy Ellie, like the color red, Reddy Ellie.
Reddy Ellie, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you don't have to apologize.
Mr. Reddy Ellie, you began your testimony with regard to this operation, and we started going into the amount of product that could be manufactured at the site on an hourly basis. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I say something funny? What could be determined on an hourly basis in the barrel as well as can be stored in the silos, correct?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gazarovski, could you start over with the question? I completely lost it.
I'll start again. In the very beginning, and perhaps it went out of sequence, we were speaking about the product being manufactured at the site.
Yes.
Answer, yes.
Okay. And my understanding is that on an hourly basis, four hundred tons of asphalt can be produced.
With this facility, yes.
Now, this facility, as it's applied for, would be one of the larger facilities in the state of New Jersey, would it not be?
If you know the answer to that.
I don't know that answer.
Okay. Now, when we're talking in terms of the utilization of the barrel to manufacture the asphalt, that's just the process, we're in the, that particular item of equipment gathers in all of the other elements, the sand, the gravel, whatever else it may be, that goes to create the asphalt itself.
When you say barrel, is it safe to say you're talking about the drum?
Yeah.
I believe our professional from Aztec did all of the testimony for the facility, so I would defer to her testimony, she's the professional.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, he's the operator, why can't I ask him those questions?
Sir, he hasn't been trained on a plant yet. I'm going to answer that question. Asking, she was here, they brought a professional in, she testified to that, all of the aspects of that plant, and I don't know-
She, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't know where he could add to her testimony other than, you know, what she testified to.
Well, he could add to it in this fashion. She testified that.
Which he did. He, he answered that.
And Mr. Gazarovski also cross-examined the representative from Aztec.
Yeah. But he, he just answered that, that she testified to that.
We're not even allowing you to ask the question. Let me ask the question.
Okay. Ask the question.
Okay. We, we know as a given that the drum can produce 400 tons of asphalt an hour, correct?
Yes.
And how many tons of asphalt do you intend to manufacture in a day?
I, I, I can tell you, I don't have a definitive answer to that. We based our business plan on sales, what we think we could sell, what the market demands, what we purchase, and we feel we came up with a number that we were comfortable with of approximately 200,000 tons of sales a year.
200,000 tons a year?
Yes.
And what does that come out to a day? If you could figure that out.
833 tons a day.
That's like operating the plant for, and I realize we have to take out of there Sundays, but that's like operating the plant three hours a day, is that what you're saying?
Potentially, yes.
But if that's, if that's all you intend to manufacture, why do you need six silos?
I, can you repeat that question?
Yeah, I mean, if that's all you're gonna be manufacturing per day, why do you need six silos that can hold 1,800 tons if all you're gonna use is perhaps 50 to 80?
We built our business plan based on what we think we can sell. It's 200,000 tons a year.
That's optimistic, isn't it?
I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know how to answer. I, I feel, Mr. Gazarovski, that that's our honest assessment of what the market demands. We can sell 200,000 tons. That's how I built our plan, was based off of that.
How, how many of those 200,000 tons would you be utilizing?
Approximately 40 to 50,000 tons.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a request? I've, I've got an early appointment tomorrow and it's 10 o'clock. That was the time I told you to set.
I would, I would, I would, I would recommend that we keep going.
That was the time we agreed to.
Um, so that we can get through this cross-examination. This is a special meeting that my client has paid for.
Yeah. Why don't we run to 10:30, Mr. Gazarovski? Let's, let's try to get as much of this that we can.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my board members are saying 11:30.
Thank you.
We won't do that, but.
We need to.
Let me just make sure I got this straight. You, you're saying that on a yearly basis, you would intend to utilize, how many tons?
What we built our business model was on 200,000 tons of sales a year. That's not year one, that's not year two. We have to establish our, you know, our customer clientele. But we based, I mean, it's hard to, to get a loan for the bank to build a facility when they ask you, so how many tons do you think you can sell in a year? Okay, we have to do a business plan and that's what we did. And we felt comfortable with 200,000 tons of sales. Could it be more? Yes, I guess so. Could it be less? Absolutely it could be less. But when we, we did this projection, we honestly looked at ourselves and said, so what do you think we can sell? And that's how we came up with the number of 200,000 tons, Mr. Gazarovski. If you seem to think that's light, then.
I don't know what, I don't know whether it's, is or it's not. These are your numbers.
Well, you're making it seem like I'm not selling enough while I'm building this great big facility when I'm only selling 200,000 tons. That's the way you're making it seem, but we didn't go into it that way. We went into it, what do we think we can sell? Bottom line. It's just that simple for me.
Well, and I realize this is sloughing off into, into perhaps an opinion given by your planner, but if that's all the business you can do, why then is this property particularly suited for this use?
Okay.
I, that's a question to the planner, I, I would say. That would be a question to ask.
Right, that's a question to ask, Mr. President.
Let's go into this issue with regard to, uh... Just bear with me for one second, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Uh...
Reddy Ellie.
Reddy Ellie. Do you recall testifying before this board, dealing with the, when you, you appeared before here to give testimony with regard, I'm sorry, with regard to this application? Let me, let me rephrase the question. You earlier testified and gave direct testimony, did you not?
Yes.
And do you recall in that direct testimony identifying to the board the type of work which you did? And I think I asked you about that in the very beginning about patchwork, driveways, parking lots and the like, correct?
Yes, that's what we started off doing, yes.
And I, and I think you also said that you do not do, in that testimony, you do not do parkway or turnpike work, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that still your business plan not to do that type of work?
Yes.
So you're saying.
As of right now.
Pardon me?
As of right now, it's not our plan.
All right. But in the future, it is your goal, is it not, to acquire some of that work?
I, I, I don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring me, Mr. Gazarovski. I don't.
Okay. Now, if in fact you were to seek and get that kind of work, that would necessitate you working evening hours, would it not?
Well, because I don't do that work now, I don't know what those hours of operation are as far as doing work at night. But I do know that there's work that has to be done at night, yes.
Well, having said that, if, if the parkway and the turnpike requires night work, that means keeping your plant open after the 5:00 or 6:00 PM deadline that you set, correct?
Under.
Pardon me?
Say something like? No. No, I'm, I'm sorry, the 5:00 or 6:00.
Now, what were the hours of operation you gave to the, the zoning board? You gave different hours to the planning board. What are your hours to the zoning board?
I mean, the side comment is, is really objectionable.
Well, what are the hours that you're projecting to work?
What, what are your hours?
7 to 5.
Okay, 7 to 5 PM. Now, if you were to work on the jobs dealing with the turnpike and the parkway, that would mean that you'd have to be working after 5 o'clock or working into the evening hours, correct?
If you're assuming that I'm doing the work myself, yes.
Okay. Now, can we, are you prepared to stipulate then that you will not be operating this plant after 5:00 PM?
I, I believe, I'm gonna check, I believe there's testimony into the record as to.
There's already testimony.
Yeah, as to what the hours of operations are.
And he, he, if I recollect, were you, was your testimony prior to, were you gonna operate past 5 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe you said you would operate past 5 o'clock in perhaps a total of five times a year. Was that not it?
I, I don't have my testimony in front of me, but, Mr. Gazarovski, I believe my interpretation of that question was how many nights does our business, L and L paving, paving, our company, work on an average in a year? And I said five nights.
Okay. So that means that if in fact you had a, a purchaser other than yourself who was doing parkway or turnpike work, you would keep the plant open to service or satisfy him into the evening hours?
If, if we were competitive enough price-wise to sell him that material where it was cheaper for him to purchase it from us, then yes to that answer.
Well, as part of your business plan, that would be logical, would it not?
I don't.
Well, I think that, I think that question's been asked and answered.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. Now, how about with regard to, on Saturdays? I know that, and I don't recall which board it was before.
Once again, the side comment is, is objectionable.
What are you talking, what's, I don't understand what it's.
I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the side comment, I'm sorry.
Side? S N I D E?
The side comment.
I didn't make a side comment.
I, I didn't hear.
The question, they asked a question of the testimony provided here to the zoning board.
Yes.
Uh, it also goes to his credibility. My question is, you gave two different days of operation between the zoning board and the planning board, did you not?
Once again.
I, it's irrelevant.
Irrelevant?
What's the testimony before the zoning board? That, that's all we need to know.
Well, he could tell us.
I, I'm not aware of any of the planning board testimony.
Right.
Nor, it doesn't, is it applicable to this case?
Right. Mr. Gazarovski, I understand what I think you're, you're doing and where you're going, but please limit your questions to the direct testimony given in this body, please. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, let me ask, oh, and I, and I think this is a proper question to ask of him and I'll listen to the objection from my colleague. I believe your testimony is to the effect that this is one of the best spots to have this facility, is it not?
I think that would be his opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
In my opinion, I think it's a great spot, yes.
You think it's a great spot? Now, that is contrary to the opinion of both the, the planning board, the minister.
Mr. Gazarovski, let's leave the planning board out, let's, let's stay direct to the zoning board.
That is contrary, that is contrary to the opinion of the governing body, is it not?
No. I mean.
I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Once again, I'm objecting. He asked for his, he asked for his opinion about whether he likes this site or not, yes.
And I'm, and I'm asking him whether or not that opinion of his is contrary.
I don't, I don't think the, I don't think he could answer a question what the opinion is of the, the governing body.
You know what the opinion is. The opinion of the governing body is in 2017, they passed an ordinance specifically prohibiting concrete plants and asphalt plants.
I, I totally understand that, but how does this witness, how is he able to answer that? He doesn't know the governing body, what their intention is.
Well.
That's why he's here to get a use variance.
He, he has to know what the intention is because it's in the zoning ordinance.
He's here, he's here to get a use variance.
He's here, Mr. Gazarovski, he's here because he needs a use variance to operate the plant. It's not material what he thinks about the governing body's opinion or the planning board body's opinion. It's his opinion, the site is appropriate, he realizes he's got a burden to bear, he's trying to bear the burden. And it's a use variance and it's nothing more than that. His opinion is that the site is suitable, he's demonstrating proofs, right or wrong, for the board to decide whether or not he can make the Medici argument, the particular suitability and so forth and so on. It's not his burden. His burden is as a plant operator to answer questions about operation.
It's his burden as an applicant.
Well, I agree with that, but he simply is of testimony as to operation. He's not a professional, he doesn't under, he did not indicate that he had any knowledge of what the governing body's position is or is not. All he knows, quite frankly, is that he needs a use variance to be here. And he's presented testimony through other witnesses in an attempt to get the approval.
Now, I understand that. Now, let's, let's talk about the, your operations. Now, how many trucks is it that you own and operate out of the site? When I say trucks, I mean trucks that are capable of carrying the asphalt product.
How many trucks do we own, Mr. Gazarovski?
No, let me make it more specific. How many trucks do you own and utilize to carry asphalt product, whether it be going somewhere else to pick up the asphalt or if in fact you granted these approvals to load them on the site and take them to a destination place?
I, I unfortunately do not know that answer exactly, but I can give you an approximate.
Okay.
It's between 18 and 20 trucks.
Okay. Now, you spoke in terms of the trucks that you're utilizing, I think you said most of your business was in Monmouth County, correct?
Yes.
Now, what is your intention to, when you leave this site, to get to the nearest highway? I don't mean a connector road, but I mean a, a main travel road. I forget the actual planning designation for such a highway, but a highway that would take you to the places that you have to go.
What we have in place now is that we exit our facility and we head north on Yellowbrook Road to Route 33.
Okay. How far away from Route 33 is your site?
I don't know that exactly.
Approximately, if you know.
1.5 miles?
Okay. Now, you're aware of the fact that the SED zone, and you may not know the answer to this, it, it calls for uses on this zone to have access to a highway. You are not on a highway, are you?
We are not on a highway.
Okay. Now, isn't it also so, if you know the answer, fine, if you don't, fine again, in order to get to Route 33, you have to drive through residential areas where there are residential houses?
Yes, there are residential houses.
And if you take the other roadway, is it Glen Allen Avenue maybe, similarly there are residential uses over there.
What, what road?
I forget the name of the street. I'll get it in a second.
Cranberry or Yellowbrook?
Cranberry, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, let me, let me ask you this question. When someone leaves your site at night.
Let him answer that question.
I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't remember the question.
The question, the question was, is there residential houses on Cranberry Road?
Yes, there are.
Okay. And if you took Cranberry Road, what would be your destination to the highway? Would it also be Route 33?
Uh, Mr. Gazarovski, we have in place now that our employees or anybody using our, coming onto our properties only to use Yellowbrook Road heading to 524 and/or Route 33. It's our practice internally to police that.
Okay. Now, but if you're selling to independent contractors and you're selling it to them in the evening hours, how are you gonna enforce that?
Uh, it, it's gonna be part of the discussion, it's gonna be in every contract, you're not to use Cranberry Road. We're gonna police it internally. Hey, you can't use that road. I mean, literally, that's what we're gonna do. I mean, to me, it just seems that simple.
It's that simple?
I, I believe it is, it's the plant manager's responsibility.
Now, let's just talk about the silos for a second, okay? Have you spent a lot of time with Aztec, Aztec to discuss with them the nature of the equipment that they're gonna install on this site?
A lot of time, no.
Well, how much time?
He answered the question.
You didn't spend a lot of time?
No, he answered the question, no.
Okay. Are you aware of the fact that Aztec also manufactures silos of a lesser height, down to 40 or 50 feet?
I'm not aware of, aware of 40 or 50 feet, but I do know that they make silos not as tall as the one we're proposing, yes.
Okay. So you could still have the same tonnage, but have silos that are lesser in height, correct?
Yes, but then we would have to increase the amount of silos to cover that. Yes, but then we would have to increase the amount of silos to cover that distance of tonnage we're losing in the height by adding another or two silos.
Well, right now, what you're saying is you're only anticipating having three silos, but if more are necessary, you'll add the additional three.
I believe what we testified to is that we're proposing six, but installing three now.
Mr. Chairman, just give me a few minutes to go over my notes, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make sure we get finished with Mr. Reddy Alley on cross-examination, if we could. Um, it's now 10:19, and I don't, you know, I don't wanna belabor this cross-examination.
Okay.
I said I needed a few minutes to go through my notes.
Continue, please.
You've spoken, uh, repeatedly about your business plan. What facts or data did you utilize to put together that plan?
Uh, I don't think there was much method to our madness. My brother and I was...
No method to your madness?
Yeah. The way we looked at it was, what we buy, could we sell more? And how much more could we sell? And how many buyers do we think we could get? And we put that number together as 200,000 tons.
Okay, let's go back a step. And I think your testimony was that, number one, you had a business plan, correct?
Yes.
And I think you said you had to show that business plan, uh, to a bank in order to qualify for getting a loan.
I don't think that's what he said. I think what the testimony was is that when you go to a bank, they ask for business plans. This is the business plan that we put together.
Okay. Let's take out the bank. Who prepared the business plan?
Once again, that's been asked and answered.
Who prepared the business plan? Was it you, or did you have the assistance of professionals?
No assistance from any professionals.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So it was done solely between you and your brother?
Yes.
Okay, did you put it down into a written format?
No.
This is just something that you thought up in your mind as to what you think you can sell?
Yes.
Now, I notice on the... And I wanna just clarify one thing. I noticed on the, uh, on the plans, there was previously a building there, I think that was used in the manufacture of a concrete product, was there not?
Yes.
What is your intended use of that building?
We're demoing most of that building.
So there will no longer be a building there or a use there that would allow for the manufacture of concrete?
There is one portion of that existing manufacturing plant that we are keeping up.
And once again, my client is here for a use variance. Do you want use variance?
Look, this is, you know, we've got a site plan that was formerly... A site that was formerly used to manufacture concrete products. And some of the earlier testimony, it was they were gonna build a fence around that facility. All I'm asking is...
What earlier testimony?
Is... Pardon me? Is your intent at some time in the future to attempt to manufacture concrete on that site? Simple as that?
We're here for a use variance to manufacture Potomac's concrete, also known as asphalt. That's what we're here for. That's what I know I'm here for.
Okay. My only question to you is, do you intend now or in the future to attempt to manufacture concrete on that site? If it's no, that's the answer.
I don't know what the future's gonna bring, Mr. Gazarovski, I'm sorry.
I know that you're seeking a use variance to construct an asphalt manufacturing plant in, uh, Hal Township. Uh, did you manufacture asphalt at your facility in Titten Falls?
I'm gonna object to that question at the prior...
What's the relevance, Mr. Gazarovski? I don't see the relevance, so please move on.
I'll tell you, look, let me just make this comment for the record. Everything that was before the planning board with regard to his initial application, anything that before this board with regard to the interpretation is relevant to this application because it goes to his credibility.
Let me just make a point abundantly clear. This applicant came to the planning board for a minor site plan to use the office and the garage, which are both permitted uses in the zone. Minor site plan, having nothing to do with asphalt manufacturing. They were gonna then make an application, a secondary application to the planning board for this use. Before that, they came here, there was an interpretation. The interpretation has them here. We're here. Can we please just focus on why we're here?
Let's move past the planning board.
I know why we're here.
It's really not revel...
Right. Relevant.
Relevant to this application. They're here because the board said they need to be here. That's why they're here.
I understand that, and he's coming before this board seeking relief from your zoning ordinances. And I would submit to you respectfully, what his intended use was when he purchased or acquired this property is relevant to his credibility.
We've already answered the question.
We're going around in circles, and it's not relevant as far as I can tell. And if it is relevant, it's up to the board to assign whatever weight they wish to give. But he's here, it's a fact, and he's not an expert in use variances or planning testimony. He's a plant operator. Please confine your questions respectfully to plant operations, based on his direct testimony here.
Now, let's assume that the, uh, numbers that you've given to us are correct, and I think I misplaced, uh, my number. You spoke in terms of, I think, a yearly, uh, yearly goal of 200,000 tons a year?
Yes.
And, uh, did you do the math with regard to seeing, uh, how many trips that would work out per day of trucks coming on the site?
That's already been answered, Mr. Gazarovski.
I missed my note. I don't know the answer. I'm just asking him that question.
I think he answered 833 tons per day.
Right. And that we divide that by 20, and that's how we get the number of trucks which are coming on and off.
Correct.
Which is over, I think, 40 in and 40 out.
Well, it depends, because some trucks hold up to 30 tons.
Right.
Let's talk also about while you're doing this. You also intend to, in addition to the manufacturing of asphalt, do you also intend to maintain your ancillary business of doing these small patch jobs and things such as that?
Oh, Al.
I'm sorry. Ask the question again, Mr. Gazarovski.
Right now, as I understand it, you're looking to manufacture and sell asphalt as a retail sale, correct?
Yes.
But in addition to that, in addition to selling asphalt as a retail sale, you're also maintaining your, let's call it your secondary business of doing your patching, uh, and things of that nature. So you've got big trucks coming in taking out asphalt, but you also have smaller trucks and other ancillary vehicles coming on and off the site.
Is the question, are we gonna continue running our business the way we have been since we bought the property and moved on it? The answer to that is yes.
Now, you have a provision in the plans, I believe, for 68 parking spaces. Why do you need 68 parking spaces? Now, that doesn't include, does it, the trucks that are parked waiting to get loaded, uh, from the silos?
I think that's engineering, not a...
Yeah.
That's an engineering question?
I think so.
I'll take that.
Because that's gonna be, you know, the engineer's gonna testify to what's required by ordinance.
Okay. That is fine.
Okay.
I have no further questions of this witness at that time. If in fact other questions develop in cross-examination of other witnesses, it's my intent to ask for the right to call him back if necessary.
Any objection, Mr. Butler?
Um, if something is raised where I guess it's an operational, specifically operational question that one of the other witnesses can't answer, then I have no issue whatsoever with having, uh, Mr. Reddy Alley.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make... Can I just make one point? You know, it's not the operator here who's seeking the use variance. It's the owner of the property who is seeking the use variance.
I understand, but he has professionals that's put forward based on ordinances and professional testimony, that some of the questions I don't feel that even an owner can answer. That's why he hires professionals to answer those questions. And I think, you know, yes, he is here to do that, to get a variance, but some of those questions, I feel, would be better off asked to the professionals.
One of the issues which we just glossed over is the testimony of the planner saying that this property is particularly suited for this use. And yet, this witness, who is the operator, has no testimony to show what his business plan is to justify how he's gonna use the property.
I think he did testify that he felt that the property was suitable for this, in his opinion, but he's not the professional to ask that question.
Plus, the planning testimony is required to provide information as to why the site is particularly suited. That's required under the statute. So what an operator and owner looks at as particularly suited is very different from what a planner looks at as particularly suited. And you'll have ample opportunity to cross-examine Ms. Caphone at a future meeting.
Yes, sir.
So you can ask her those questions.
And I don't believe Ms. Breen...
It's Beam.
Beam, Beam, Beam. I'm getting in all kinds of trouble tonight. That it is really within your purview to give your opinion as to whether or not this would...
Kind of my job, but okay, thanks.
Can I finish, please?
No. I know, you can't. You just insulted what I'm doing here, and I take exception to that.
She's my professional.
That's my job.
She's... She... I... That's why she's sitting there, is to advise us.
She can advise this board as to the ordinances, as to the standards of proof. She cannot opine as to whether or not, uh, this application has satisfied those requirements.
I can absolutely disagree with you. I can give my... The board my professional opinion as to what I think of the applicant's testimony, just like I'm planning on giving them my opinion as to what your expert testifies to. That's my job, is in my professional opinion to tell them whether I agree or disagree. You may not like that, but that is my job, and that's how that... I've been operating as a sports professional for many years.
You may find out.
Yes, sir.
We sure will.
Well, folks, before we end for this evening, we have the duty and the task of trying to find another date for this application to continue. And, Mr. Butler, I wanna just get this on the record. Have you had an opportunity to discuss with your clients whether or not they would entertain a special meeting?
Yes.
If they can, can you tell us now? So that if we don't come up with a date or at least carry it to a date, you'll have to re-notice.
Yes. My... So I think we spoke about, we would come to, definitely 100% come to the 17th, the meeting on December 17th.
December 17th?
December 17th. So that's...
If you want a date before that as well, don't you?
We want a date before that.
Well, do you...
There were two dates that were provided. My client has no problem whatsoever paying for a special meeting.
Well, can we settle on a date now, tonight?
Uh, yeah.
I can. I don't have a calendar.
Well, no. Well, we'll make sure you know the date. Let's find out what we have in... And, Mr. Gazarovski, we have a very packed board, and we're trying to get this application resolved by the end of the year. So we do have some ability to put a special together.
I think I would say that December 3rd, I would like to be able to satisfy that. Do you want November?
Well, the applicant... It would be the applicant's call.
I'm just gonna check real quick with the...
Why don't we take a minute with your client and see? I'd like to get that on the record tonight. No?
November 19th.
No, definitely not. I don't want to tell anyone.
Is December 3rd a special? They can't do it either?
December 3rd would be the best date.
December 3rd?
December 3rd, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I understand the applicant is requesting a special meeting for December 3rd at 7:30. Apparently, that does satisfy our schedule, and it's on the record, so, Mr. Butler, your client is willing to undertake the expense of paying for a special for December 3rd?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman?
Okay. And that's without further notice, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Case number BA 1806, L&amp;L Paving Company, E., will be carried to December 3rd, 7:30, special meeting, no further notice.
We need an extension, sir?
We need an extension of time.
Yes, and we will give that extension till, I think, the 17th, so...
You want to make it the end of December?
Why don't you do it to the end of December, please?
Yeah, I was gonna say, yes, the end of December.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further business of the board?
No, our next meeting is next Monday. I'll send the agenda out tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. December 3rd, we're packed. We can't, we're packed. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn if there's no further business of the board?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning board adjustments adjourn at 10:35.